All right, it is officially 7:00 PM. I'd like to call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, July 27th, 2020.
Jeff Roland is also.
All right, great. Hi Jeff. Just getting started. Wait till he gets connected. While he's getting connected, I think it would be safe to say that we could go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll please?
Roland.
Here.
Bizzard. Bellinger. Weiss.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you Barb. We did have notification from Noah that he would not be available for this evening. So if anybody would like to make a motion to excuse our absent members.
So moved Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. Do I need a roll for this or can I do all those in favor?
A roll call.
Roll call. Barb, will you call a roll for the roll call please?
This meeting is being recorded.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Now I'm looking for an approval of this evening's agenda unless anybody has any changes that they would like to bring forward.
Motion to approve the agenda Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the agenda?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, great. Holly, do we have any audience with us this evening?
We do not.
Okay, all right. Well, this would be the opportunity for audience participation, but we do not have any audience with us this evening. So I will move forward to council meeting minutes for July 13th, 2020. I'm looking for a motion to approve the council meeting minutes unless there are changes that need to be made.
I make a motion to approve our meeting minutes as presented. Reins.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll for the council meeting minutes of July 13th, 2020?
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we have the opportunity for the review of accounts payable. Jeff, I understand that you were able to review accounts payable for this week or for this session.
I did this afternoon. I reviewed the accounts payable. And I'd like to make a motion to approve checks 15A through 17A and 73370 through 73442 dated July 10th through July 23rd and the amount of $331,000, $331,095.78.
Great, thank you so much. Did anybody have any questions regarding the accounts payable? All right, I'm looking for support for Jeff's motion.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll please?
Roland.
Yes.
Smith. Smith.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. Great, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our action items for this evening. We have a short list. The first up is the Boardwalk Replacement Grant Design Engineering Agreement. And so Cory, I'll hand this right off to you. You're on mute.
Thank you, Eric. On the agenda this evening is a proposal for the engineering and permitting stage of our boardwalk replacement. This is the existing 30-plus-year-old boardwalk that runs on the west side of the North Putnam Street Bridge, down, you know, around Old Mill Park in the Red Cedar River. We've been working for several months now on both the match component of the grant as well as the design and engineering. We are tonight at our third board in trying to piece this together. So we have, the Economic Development Corporation is partnering with the DDA to finance the match component, which is about $62,000. The DDA has really made some tough choices in its budget in order to fund a majority of this proposal. They are foregoing their facade improvement program for this year as well as probably next year, as well as a lot of their discretionary funding for things like events or decorations and things like that that we're taking a pause on in order to make this happen. And so despite all that, we're still a little short and the request tonight is really twofold. It's called a Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP grant, which runs through the city. And so even though we've been approaching it as a DDA project, like some of our other projects with the DDA, it will have a two-step approval process where DDA basically recommends it to council and council ultimately approves. So that's the first piece, but the second piece is that we are requesting some funding from both the Major Streets Fund in our sidewalks department and the General Fund in our parks department in order to get this over the finish line in this first phase of the work. And so all told, the General Fund's contribution is $12,150 and Major Streets is $5,000. The General Fund one is a, it could be a little less depending on how the geotechnical work goes. There's going to have to be some soil borings done along the existing boardwalk area. And depending on what they find, that cost incorporates basically our worst expectation. But it could be around $10,000 if it goes well. So all of that said, the goal here is to keep us moving along. The grant itself is about $250,000 and that's a big chunk of change that we can, are attempting to take advantage of. But certainly just trying to put all the pieces together has been difficult, especially post-COVID where there's more revenue uncertainty. It was certainly not our intent to have to try to come to council with this two-step proposal with the Major Streets and the General Fund, but I really, it was my last resort. So if I could have done it through DDA, there just simply was really nothing left to cut in their fund without really jeopardizing what little bit of fund balance they have left after the parking lot project that was just finished up in the spring. So that's by way of background, if this is approved, we would intend that the design process would start with a goal of hitting a spring bidding date through MDOT. MDOT is the coordinator of this grant. And so that in and of itself creates a bit more paperwork and a bit more time and effort on the part of the engineers. If anybody recalls the last couple of times that we've done street work on Middle Street, those have been through MDOT and there's basically just a lot of other hurdles that come with that versus, for example, the parking lot that we just did, which was just exclusively our project. So by taking the grant, you know, we have a bit more obligations to jump through with MDOT because they ultimately get their money from the federal government. The second piece I just want to highlight is that this is for the design and permitting only. And there's a key aspect of the design that will drive the construction cost, which is how we will end up stabilizing the new pathway, basically from the bridge for about 200 feet to the south. That's the one area of this pathway that is not on land. In other words, we're going to have to have some type of stabilizing retaining wall or sheet pilings or possibly even timber that stabilizes it on that end. And that should be, you know, it could end up being half of our entire construction cost. And so we wanted to base the eventual construction administration phase on what the actual scope of work ends up being. And that should come into focus as we get into the design phase and get something submitted to MDOT. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments or concerns.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and jump in Cory. And I know that you have scrutinized everything in our discussions and I know that this has been a couple of years in the works because Scott stumbled upon this opportunity for us and had he not found that opportunity, we would probably be taking the boardwalk out because we wouldn't have had the funding to replace it. So you are very comfortable then with taking money from the Parks Department budget? You don't foresee anything that you would have needed those funds for the rest of this fiscal crack?
The answer to that is sort of. So for the last couple of years, we've budgeted between $30,000 and $35,000 in the Parks Department for contracted services and that includes a host of different activities. Last year, I think we ended up spending less than 10 and some of that was by design. Once we got into March and we realized the impact that the COVID shutdown was going to have on revenues, that's one of our, you know, five to six areas in the General Fund that we have a little bit of control based on the projects that we're seeking to do. And so ideally this year, you know, that would be another line item that we could, you know, flex as we go forward. But the money is there. The budget was built with that $35,000 allowance. Right now, this would be our biggest chunk out of that that we would foresee. And it would certainly be our intent to watch that closely, especially since we don't have the full yet impact of revenue sharing. You know, we've got our June payment, which was better than we anticipated. And the next big bellwether is going to be the August payment. And then finally, it's going to be what does the state do to balance its budget? And so they can control what's called statutory revenue sharing. And we just don't know what they're going to do with that yet. And so my answer, I guess, is a little more long-winded than the yes or no because there's certain things we just don't know. But at the same time, we don't want to let the $250,000 grant lapse.
Correct. And like I said, I know that you have looked at every single aspect of this. So thank you for that explanation for the Parks Fund. Any other questions regarding this action item? Tim?
Yes, it was presented to me and I suggested a few amendments to the general terms and conditions. I did prepare an addendum. I don't know if that was circulated. It clarifies a couple of the terms and conditions with regard to indemnification provisions, use of the work product and confidentiality provisions.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
If nobody has any further discussions or questions for Cory or Scott, oh, Jeff Roland, see your hand. Hello.
Yeah, thank you. So Cory, as always, I know you do an extremely thorough job in just exploring all avenues that are out there. You know, if this additional funding is not provided, you know, what would be the recourse and what would occur if this doesn't pass? What's plan B, in other words?
Yeah, it's a good question, Jeff. Really, the only option that I can foresee if we don't ask for this in this motion would be to go back to the DDA and ask if they would come up with the $17,000 from their fund balance. I'm not recommending that, both as the city manager and the DDA director, because I do think it's important that the DDA has a little bit of fund balance in the event that they have a surprise expense here or there. I'm just hesitant to bring their fund balance much below. I think we were projecting it was going to be hovering right around $50,000. And so the $37,000 that's coming from the DDA is $32,000 from their budget cuts, the discretionary things that we were basically moving, and $5,000 from their fund balance. And so that was about as much as I felt comfortable with both advising and asking them for. And I think it would be, it would just be a hard thing to go to them and say, you know, we're looking for another 17 when they've already cut, you know, basically everything that they like to do in a given year has already been pushed aside for likely two years.
Eric, let me ask the question slightly differently. Is there a way to not do some of the project but still implement a project that's successful in maybe a two-phase scenario? You know, or is there parts of the project that might not even be necessary to lower the cost? Or is where we're at, you know, pretty much what has to be done, you can't really tear any of it back?
I think it's going to be hard for us to answer that definitively until we get into some of the design work, which then, you know, we're here and we have to do the design work. And so our engineer's estimate that was used to apply for the grant was something that Scott put together, you know, based on a concept drawing. And that came up with a project around $313,000. So $250,000 is the grant and then the match of $62,000. But that's without actually engineering and designing this retaining wall, sheet piling aspect that needs to be put in on that, this south side of the bridge. And so I think that, you know, my initial thought is that we really need to get in the design phase to determine that. And I think that will determine if there's other things, like the estimate includes a lookout on the river. And so that would be something that could be scaled back if we come back and say that this core component is simply too much for us to afford. I would look to Scott if Scott has a different sense of how this design component might be realigned. I mean, we did look at that and just didn't see an exact path there.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay. Jeff, to answer your question and to kind of add on to what Cory said, the concept that we had from some earlier work did have some cost estimates in it. And what I did is I took that information and actually pared things back quite a bit to try and get down to just the meat of what we have to do right now. There still are some aspects of it that as we talked with Spicer, we walked through the project, we said, look, we have to value engineer this thing into the budget that we've got because there just is not a lot of excess money out there. The problem that we're also facing is the fact that the boardwalk is getting to be in very bad shape. And just the pure cost of, if we were just to try and replace the planking alone on there, we had estimated that before, just in material costs several years ago, depending on which material we chose, between $25,000 and $50,000. And that wasn't even taking care of the structural part from underneath that was falling apart at that point in time. So we're kind of running into a situation where to get this quarter million dollars of grant is, we don't have other sources that's going to provide something like that. And our only other option is going to be to completely tear the whole thing down. And then the community won't have that boardwalk area. They won't have the sidewalk connecting up to, or the boardwalk connecting up to the bridge. We've had to shut that down over this last winter because we couldn't run our equipment over top of it to clear the snow up. So we're getting that concerned about it structurally that we can't go much longer on it. Does that help to answer your question, Jeff?
Yeah, for sure. I appreciate both of your feedbacks. Thank you.
Do I have any other questions from council members for Cory or Scott? Yes, Dan? You're on mute. There you go.
I just wanted to say, you know, none of us, this started out as a DDA project. We all were hoping to see it, that the DDA be able to fully fund the match. But Cory and Scott did a really great job getting this large grant to be able to revamp this. If I remember correctly, the City of Lansing actually stepped out of the way when they saw this project and kind of said, hey, you guys really need this and stepped out of the way and allowed us to get it. If the city and, you know, if the city has to support it a little bit so that we don't lose a quarter million dollar grant, it's not, none of us want to spend this extra money, but to keep a quarter million dollar grant, $17,000 isn't, it's not a small sum, but in the grand scheme of things, I think we have.
Thank you, Dan. And I'll echo what Scott alluded to too. This has really been something that's been out there since I started on council five years ago. And that came out with Howard Dahlstrom and Earl Wolf trying to expand the boardwalk back behind those businesses on the northwest side of Grand River to really enhance that whole downtown walkability. And so this was a vision that's always been there. We had MSU urban planning students come out, give us their different ideas for how we could really improve that. So, you know, I would echo what Dan has said too. This is, this is a good, I believe, expenditure of some money that's not coming from DDA to help this project move forward. If there's no other discussion or questions, I'm looking for a motion for this action item to move it forward.
Make a motion to approve, beat ya. Motion to approve entering into agreement with Spicer Group to provide design, engineering and permitting services for the boardwalk replacement grant project with funding of $37,000 from the DDA fund, $5,000 from the Major Streets Fund Sidewalks Department and $12,150 from the General Fund Parks Department budgets, subject to the city attorney's approval of final contract language.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge that I see that we've had John Bizzard, Councilman Bizzard, join us as well. So I wanted to make sure that we're all aware that he is on the Zoom meeting now. Barb, will you call the roll please?
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Moving forward, our next action item is late fees on water and sewer accounts. And we have Rachel here with us. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Rachel.
I guess I should unmute it first.
Yeah.
So I laid out what our kind of plan moving forward is on charging late fees on water and sewer accounts. As we started discussing this, probably in late June, when we were talking about getting City Hall back open in some capacity, Cory and I kind of went through what late fees would look like. And I think we've been pretty successful in making City Hall accessible to everyone in some way, shape or form. I've seen a huge uptick in credit card payments and people are really just making it work for them. So with that, I think it's time to start getting back to some type of normalcy. And the expectation of when we send the water bill out, we expect that you're going to pay it. I believe we, I wrote in the memo that the executive order on not disconnecting for non-payment has been extended through the end of the current year. And so when that came out, I don't know if it's related to it or not, but I do know that our payments have gone down since then. And so I just think that it needs to, at some point, we're going to need to make it an incentive to pay your bill on time. And I think that time has come.
And Rachel, my question would be, I know that you'll post this on the city website. You'll probably post it on Facebook. Do you have any other way that you will be communicating with residents that now's the time that late fees are going to be assessed?
Yep, so last couple of weeks, Ann has done a really good job of drafting a reminder bill that we plan, if you all approve to move forward with this tonight, our plan is the second or third week in August, anybody that hasn't paid yet or has that delinquent amount owing, that we're going to send a reminder bill out, like we would, a shut-off notice. But we've changed the language. We've completely taken off any reference to disconnecting service. So that reminder bill will go out a week and a half before the bills actually do. So people know, okay, they do mean business.
Okay.
The reminder bill also lets you know all of the different methods that you can pay. So it's just another reminder for people.
Okay. Jean, I think I saw your hand up. Do you have a question for Rachel?
Jeff Roland also has his.
Okay, Jeff Roland too, okay.
Hey, just real quick. So, you know, moving forward, say we go back into a full shutdown scenario because of a resurgence or something along those lines, times get tough again. This doesn't lock us in to not being able to relax it again in the future if that's needed, right?
Not at all.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
I was going to say, I'm not a biggest fan of late fees because if someone's already building up a huge bill and they're struggling to pay anyways, I feel like we're being a bit double punitive there. You know, is there any way to not do that?
Rachel, I'll go ahead and throw that back to you.
You can definitely say, no, I don't, I don't think we should be charging late fees. But I can tell you that I think it's pretty generalized for you to make the assumption that people aren't paying because they can't afford to. Because.
Yeah, and I think there could be people taking advantage of this scenario as well, right?
They definitely are.
I mean, shutting the water, going to make someone pay a lot quicker than a late fee, I guess, is my stance. Late fees just seem punitive where when the water's off, they're going to pay the bill.
Sure. We just don't have the, we just don't have the authority to shut them off right now.
Well, now, the last question is that we interpret the executive order to mean the city cannot. Are we 100% sure that's what the order says? I haven't read it.
Tim?
Yes.
Can you chime in on that, please?
It just didn't seem very definitive.
I have not reviewed the specifics on that, but I trust that Rachel's interpretation is adequate. There's been a moratorium, say, on evictions from rental properties. And this would go along with the same type of protections that are generalized across broad categories of people. The idea is if your water's shut off, you have to go. And because there's a pandemic, there's nowhere to go, similar with the evictions. And so that is, as was mentioned by Councilmember Roland, a great incentive. But if that incentive is taken away, what other incentive is there? But to impose a late fee and ultimately that will have to be paid and could result in a shutdown if it gets to that point where that's allowed again. Otherwise, there are other methods for which the city can collect that. Plus, there's a cost to the city in dealing with delinquent accounts and foregoing the revenue that's supposed to be coming in during this time. So it isn't necessarily punitive. It's remedial in one sense. And it provides an adequate incentive in light of the fact that we don't have the ultimate incentive of shut off.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And Rachel, I would have to suspect that these late fees that you have itemized out, that if we were collecting late fees for March, April, May, June, these are definitely higher than what we've seen in previous years, obviously, because people kind of have that comfort that, oh, I don't have to pay my water bill on time, but I'm not going to get assessed a late fee. So had this pandemic not happened, we wouldn't be seeing these high late fees during these months because people would be paying like normal on time. And that's honestly $8,000. That's a nice chunk of revenue that we're not getting because we're not charging late fees. So, you know, it's hard to make a decision like that. But I think that you've brought forward a really, you know, solid motion for us to try to get back on our feet and, like you said, back to some normalcy. Any other questions for Rachel?
Councilman Weiss has his hand up.
Councilman Weiss, there you are.
Thank you. And it's for Rachel. I think you said.
Thank you. And it's for Rachel. I think you said in the memo, but if someone truly is distressed and they have an issue with paying, they can always work out a payment plan with the city. Is that correct? Right?
Exactly. Yes. So what we generally will do is if someone calls us and says, hey, I've got this three-hundred-dollar water bill, and there's just no way I can pay it all at once, Ann will set up a payment plan with them. And what we will do is we will, as long as they make the payments that they tell us they're going to do, and generally, we ask them, tell us how much you can pay. Is it twenty bucks every other week? Is it, you know, twenty bucks a month? Just so that we know that they're making that effort, we'll waive the late fees as long as they don't default on that payment plan. And so they know upfront that, hey, we're we're giving a little bit by saying, yes, we're going to work with you, but you also have to uphold your end of the deal, too.
Yeah, understand. And I agree with you. I think that there's many out there that are taking advantage of this, and it it's time to move on and recoup our costs. But thanks.
Any other questions for Rachel? All right, I'm looking for a motion to move this action item forward.
I'll make a motion to authorize applying late fees to delinquent water and sewer accounts, beginning with the August 2020 billing. Weiss.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Do I have support?
Second, Rhines.
Thank you, Councilman Rhines. If there's no further discussion, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
You're muted, Barb.
Sorry. Gilroy.
Yes.
Rowland.
Oh.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Good discussion, and thank you, Rachel, for putting this together for us. It's not an easy task by any means, working with the community, especially with the the current climate that we're in. But I appreciate what you and Ann are doing in the office to make it easy for the residents and working with them. All right, next we have the wastewater treatment plant cap generator radiator repair. Scott, thank you for this very detailed memo and for pointing out what a cost would be if we had to buy something new and everything.
Yeah, I don't have an exact figure on new, but for the size of this generator and the location of it, we're we're talking six figures to replace this thing. So realistically, we should get many, many more years out of this diesel generator. I can't give an exact number, but I I would expect a couple more decades of this. So I think it's well invested right now to put money into this radiator. And the diesel engine itself is in very good order, and we should expect much more from it. Unfortunately, since it's a late nineteen-eighties vintage unit, the manufacturer does not make replacements off the shelf for these anymore, and it has to be custom-made, which is more expensive than what you would normally have for one that's ready to go off the shelf. Due to the size of it, it's a pretty big number as far as what the cost of the specialized unit is. So I guess, are there any questions in this?
Who has their hand up? Anybody? Yes, Councilman Weiss.
Yeah, just a quick question, Scott. Without the backup generator, then we can't provide sewer and water. Is that correct?
Well, when the power goes out from DTE, this generator has to run, or the entire plant sits and nothing happens, which is not a good situation. You have to treat the sewage when the power goes out. It's the most cost-effective way for us to have backup power. Large, very large municipalities with large treatment plants, they will sometimes have a secondary feed brought in from the utility off a different part of the grid. But that's not even fail-safe. So nothing's completely fail-safe. This is the most cost-effective way for the city to have backup power. It is required according to the permit that we have to treat, and we have to meet our permit.
Awesome. No, no, I I agree, has to be replaced. But the the control panel, you put that as a less urgent item? Would you want to do it all at once, I guess, or what?
We're not quite ready with that. We're investigating some options with that. The the unit was supplied at the time without a lot of connection to our SCADA system. So right now, when the power goes out and that unit is running, all we know is that there's an alarm that the power went out. We don't have anything diagnostic or telling us that the unit's running the way it's supposed to, or that the transfer switch is in the right position. So it's better that we have that. It's not urgent at the moment. But as far as us watching the expenditures on the wastewater side this year and what we had planned, we think we can fit it in, but it is probably good for us to wait a little bit more time into the fiscal year as well, just to make sure that we're staying on target for what the budgets are.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Any hands up, Holly?
No.
Okay. All right. I will go ahead and look for a motion to move this forward. If there's no other questions for Scott or discussion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the repair replacement of the radiator, the wastewater treatment plant backup generator by Michigan Cap, in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Weiss.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask Barb to call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Rowland. Rowland, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, that was a yes.
All right. That completes our action items for this evening. We have no discussion items on our agenda. We've received no correspondence that is listed on the agenda. So I will move right into our department head reports, and I will start with our city manager report. Corey, is there anything in addition you would like to add, or does anybody have any questions for Corey?
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight the last bullet point of the report, talking about the abandonment of that observation well, which we had a presentation on a couple meetings ago. The work went extremely well. We were authorized for up to thirty thousand, and the total cost was about a little over ten thousand one hundred. So we were about a third of the cost, which is both good news for that project as well as other water department projects that we are still hoping to do this year. I do think Scott has a picture there, an object. If Scott just quickly tell them what we found there.
Yeah, that's great.
What I have that you can kind of see in front of me here, this is the piece of pipe from the forty-nine-foot level. You can see that it turned into Swiss cheese down there.
Wow.
And there's another about forty-five feet below this that was disintegrated.
Oh, my gosh.
When we said it was an urgent issue, it turned out to be much more urgent than we thought.
Great. Well, it's great that it came in under budget.
What was happening was groundwater from the upper formation was able to come into the holes here and then go down into our rock, and that's not a good situation.
Wow.
So they were able to fish this out for me to show you.
Great. It's always good to have show and tell items, Scott. You do well with that, by the way. Any questions for Corey on his department report? All right. Chief, are you still with us? Yes, you are.
I am. I do not have anything to report. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for being here, chief. All right. And then we also received a report from AGS on some permits and everything that have been pulled in Williamson. So people are still doing projects throughout the COVID time that we're experiencing, so that's always good to see. Subcommittee reports. Would anybody like to bring anything forward from a meeting that they've attended? Any hands up? All right. Moving forward, did we have any audience join in, Holly?
Monica Schaefer was here for a minute, but she already left, so.
Okay, all right. All right. And this would be the time for audience participation at the end of our agenda. I'll move right forward then. Councilman Smith, Councilman, comments? Anything?
Got nothing tonight. Thanks.
All right. Councilman Weiss.
Just a shout out to Scott. Great job in keeping on top of maintenance issues. And censor my disease for running the city infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rhines.
No comments.
All right. Councilman Rowland?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bizzard.
Yeah, I apologize for being late. I got a little held over what I was doing at work, so.
Well, we appreciate that you made it.
Yeah, but other than that, I have no comments.
All right. And I know I have no comments either, so I will go ahead and call to adjourn this meeting at seven forty. Thank you all for being here.